We are currently live on Facebook to let everyone know that we're having a problem and we're hoping to start the meeting soon. Thank you.
I've got a link to send Dr. Moore. She had another engagement, but you can jump on there if we can send her a link. I'm going to send it to her.
So send to her St. Clair email, Herb?
I'm sending it to her right now. I've got the, I got the one where she's at, so with her and I'm checking on Mr. Golladay now.
We have heard from Commissioner Golladay that she'll be joining us in about five to 10 minutes. Myra just gave me that update.
Okay, Dr. Moore's got the link, so she should be joining shortly also.
Just want to remind everyone that we are currently live on Facebook, so.
Thanks to everyone for their patience. We're ready to begin.
Tommy, we don't have a quorum though yet, do we?
Yes, we do.
Yes, okay.
Commission. Good. Good morning, everybody. Sorry for the delay. I will call the Board of Commissioners, meeting in the Vice Development Agency Virtual Meeting for Friday, November the 18th, 2022. It, I got 8:42. Myra, we do a roll call?
Commissioner Simmons?
Present.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Present.
Commissioner Beach?
Present.
Commissioner Gladney?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Golladay?
Here.
Commissioner Postello?
Present.
Commissioner Cox? Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And we'll go back to Commissioner Moore. We do have a quorum present.
Fine, thank you. Moving on, Myra, was there any public comment cards received?
Yes, Chair, we received several comments from Mr. Shannon Villa. The topics included multiple issues, observations for the weekend of October 14th, 2022, demanding accountability of Metro service, no response to previous comments, Metro weight assessment metrics, and the renaming of stations. Just so you know, it is my understanding that Mr. Chuck Stewart, Executive Director of Metro Transit, has responded to these comments.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Moving on, approval of the minutes of the September 23rd, 2022, Board of Commissioners. Open meeting minutes have been provided for your review. Are there any corrections to the minutes at this time? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve those minutes and place on file.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of October 14th, 2022, special meeting, Board of Commissioners, open meeting, the minutes from the October 14th, 2022, special meeting in the Board of Commissioners, the open meeting have been provided for your review. Are there any corrections to these minutes at this time? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it. Toby, you're up.
I will make it very brief, since we got a bit of a late start. So first, I want to let the Board of Commissioners know that we have moved forward on our COLA adjustment this year. I announced that with our employees. We are moving ahead on a 5% COLA, which is reflective of what our, right now, deal is with our representative employees at both with 788 and IBW. So we think it's a very positive, very important in regards to retention this year. The board has, has obviously made their feelings known on that. Very important to keep our employees engaged and moving forward on this basis. It also is in line, I would note, with several Bureau of Labor Statistics numbers associated with state and local governments. Regionally, right now, just from an April 21 to an April of 22 numbered, those wages for state and local governments have moved up 4.2%. It also reflects what our partners are doing, for instance, at East West Gateway, et cetera. So we're moving forward on that. Also, we are working very hard on, of course, FY '24. We're trying to move that budget up quickly so that we can do our presentations as soon as the turn of the year comes. And we will start having those discussions right now. As a matter of fact, they've already started with our partners in St. Clair County with the Transit District. Meetings have been scheduled to start talking about our new budget season. I also sent that memo, which I mentioned at the beginning of assembling our crew on Allsum, but we are continuing to work on that in a cooperative way. And we are actually very happy that as of the November 28th service change, that we will be running the Blue MetroLink trains all the way through. So one good thing about that scheduling change is that we will be able to run them through and not have the transfer at the Forest Park Station. That is obviously an improvement to our customers. But our system is not running at the capacity that it should, and we are concentrating on working on that every single day. As a matter of fact, Allsum will be in town on Monday, actually to review the Mid-America Extension Contractor Update. And we will also be meeting with them and talking to them about the progress on the Signal House. So I know I threw a lot at you, but I'm trying to make it very brief today. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Anyone have any questions for Toby on this report? Okay, moving on, we'll have the report of the Operations Committee, and Commissioner Winmiller will provide a report.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. A virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on October 14th, 2022, immediately following a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The draft minutes of the meeting were included in your meeting materials today under item number seven. The Operations Committee is recommending approval of five items, which are noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda Item Number 11. The annual, the 2022 Annual Surplus Property Holdings Resolution 1233, modification and time extension for the East Riverfront Stair Replacement Project, Resolution Number 1234. Contract modification for the Micro Transit Project Contract Extension Resolution 1235. The Soul Source Contract Award Light Rail Vehicle Brake Caliper Overhaul Resolution Number 1236. And the Second Amendment to the Second Memorandum between Bi-State Development and the City of St. Louis, Resolution Number 1237. In addition, at the October Committee Meeting and Operations Report, including a workforce update, was provided by Charles Stewart, Executive Director of Metro Transit. An executive session was not held at the October meeting. This concludes my report for the Operations Committee.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from Commissioner Winmiller on that? Hearing none, we'll move into the report of the Audit Finance Administration Committee, and Commissioner Beach will have a report on that.
Thank you. Good morning. A virtual meeting of the Audit Finance and Administration Committee was held on October 14th, immediately following the Operations Committee meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your board packet under item number eight. The AFA Committee is introducing today two items on the Consent Agenda for consideration with the committee's recommendation of approval. Those items are under item 11. G, Soul Source Contracts for Hardware and Software Maintenance, which is Resolution 1238. H, Contract Modification for Talent Management Solution, that's Resolution 1239. At the October meeting, several informational items were also presented to the committee, including the Internal Audit Follow-Up Summary for the First Quarter of Fiscal Year '23, Internal Audit Status Report, first quarter of fiscal year '23, the Internal Audit State Safety Oversight Status Report for the Third Quarter of Calendar Year '22, the Treasuries Report, the Quarterly Treasury Safekeeping Accounts Audit ending June 30th of 2022, their procurement report, and the update on Risk Management Insurance Program. This concludes my report for the Audit Finance and Administration Committee meeting.
Any questions for Commissioner Beach on his report? Hearing none, we'll move into the report of the Safety and Security Committee, which I will give on November the 18th today. I'm happy to report that a virtual meeting of the Safety and Security Committee was held on October the 6th, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of this, that meeting was, is included in your board packet under item number nine. The committee is recommending one item for approval today under the Consent Agenda, item number 11, Extension of a Contract Between Chestland Healthcare, Inc., and the Bi-State Development Agency for Transit Client Engagement Service, Resolution Number 1232. In addition, at the October Committee Meeting, a presentation was given regarding the Get Help Application Program, and staff provided the commissioners with the Bi-State Safety Oversight 2022 Annual Update. This concludes my report for the Safety and Security Committee meeting. And if there's no questions to me on that report, we'll move on to item number 10, Adjustment of the Consent Agenda. Are there any adjustments to the Consent Agenda at this time? Hearing none, there's no adjustments to the Consent Agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda's items as referenced in the committee reports and as outlined on the agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, ayes have it. The amend and restated the 457 Executive Deferred Compensation Plan, Resolution Number 1240. Ask Diana Benz for comments.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Simmons. The 457F Executive Deferred Compensation Plan was approved during the special meeting on October 14th. At this time, the plan did not provide for the Chief Audit Executive Position as an eligible participant. The positions currently in the plan include the CEO and President, all of our Executive Vice Presidents and Executive Director of Metro Transit. Upon further discussion and consideration, we would like to add the Chief Audit Executive Position, as the retention of this role is important to the organization, and it's also one of two positions that hold a contract. We've made allowances for this position to be added to the plan during our computation of financial impact and feasibility. So we are asking for your approval to add the Chief Audit Executive Position to the 457 Executive Differral Plan.
Thank you. Is there any questions that, to Diana, on her request and her report there? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, ayes have it. Moving on. Approval of the 2023 Board of and Committee Meeting Schedule, a draft schedule of 2023 Board and Committee Meeting Dates were distributed to the Board of Commissioners in October for review. Staff has received no objections to the date. If there's no objections and no discussion, are these dates okay? And if so, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it. Electronic Fair Collection System, Tom Grand. I see you're with us. You're up.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm presenting for your information, Counsel Hyperion's review of last year's request for proposals process for an electronic fair collection system, and Bi-State's recommendation for a provider. Bi-State first issued an RFP for an electronic fair collection system in January 2021. The request sought vendor proposals for an account-based electronic fair collection system through a cloud-hosted platform that could work with smart cards, paper barcode tickets, and a customer-facing web portal, integration with mobile ticketing and bus and light rail validators. We received 10 proposals that were ranked by an evaluation committee in April 2021, and four finalist firms were invited to give presentations. In May 2021, the Operations Committee was presented with a request to pre-approve the highest-ranking firm from this process, even though a final recommendation had not yet been made by staff at that time. Commissioners at that time had questions regarding the e-faring system in regard to the cost and how the new collection system would fit into our total transit picture. And as a result, a motion to table that recommendation from staff was approved to allow for further discussion. This past summer, Bi-State issued an RFP to select a consultant with the expertise to conduct an objective review of the previous RFP process for creating a new fair collection system. Counsel Hyperion is the firm that was selected to help us develop a new fair collection system. Lawrence Sutton, our lead consultant from Counsel Hyperion, is with us on our Zoom today. So the first task in the fair collection program scope of work was to review last year's RFP process for an electronic fair collection system to see that the project scope was sufficient, that the procurement process was properly followed, and if the best proposal with fair pricing was recommended. Counsel Hyperion has reviewed last year's recommended vendor proposal from Masabi, along with the three other finalists. Our consultants have found that the Masabi proposal meets 95% of Bi-State's requirements in the RFP. Counsel Hyperion has stated that Masabi's system is a mature platform with financial reporting, customer reporting, and asset monitoring all in one tool. Masabi's proposal is payment card industry or PCI compliant, and it meets the requirements of our fair collection RFP very well. As an added benefit, the Masabi platform is an account-based software-as-a-service system that can be implemented to align with our secure platform plan schedule. Today's fair collection systems are account-based, in which a central software system controls the entire process. The old card-based system is no longer useful. In the old system, validators contained all the fare rules information, and it would read and write the data back to the fare card, which held the value for the rider. But now, account-based systems are the new standard. The central backend software system contains all of the fare rules and keeps a record of all account values. The fare media is now just a token or credential that can take many forms, such as a smart card. It can be a physical ticket, a mobile phone, or even a smart watch. So under the software-as-a-service model, the vendor only supplies a limited portion of the fair collection system, and then the transit agency can collect, select its preferred supplier for ticket vending machines and fare boxes. The software-as-a-service provider then gives the suppliers its application programming interfaces or APIs, and any number of vendors can interact with the system. Counsel Hyperion is recommending that Bi-State complete the selection of Masabi as our fair collection program provider to serve us a backend support system. Counsel Hyperion will continue working on the next six tasks of the fair collection program, including an RFP for new TVMs and fare boxes, technical support for fare equipment replacement and integration, revenue security and project management, and that will continue during the next two years. The cost of an electronic bearing system is projected to be $3.5 million, which includes a 10% contingency. This is the same price as last year. This project would be funded 80% by federal funds, 15% by Proposition M, and 5% by St. Clair County Transit District. This briefing paper is being presented today for informational purposes only, so that the Board of Commissioners has time to consider this proposal prior to a future decision. Mr. Sutton and I would be happy to answer any questions you have, and if you have any technical questions regarding Masabi that we cannot answer immediately, we'll provide you written responses via email. So at this time, I know that's a lot of information, but I welcome your questions.
Before I ask for any questions from the other commissioners, I just want to make a point that, you know, I was one that was skeptical of the old program in this town. As you know, you and I have talked about this and discussed that, you know, one of my concerns was, is as we move forward, that, that those same type of issues don't take, repeat or so. And I'm happy to report that you have took those clouds out of my mind on this moving forward, and I appreciate the work that, that you've been putting in on this. And I think even this, this is for informational only. I think that the more information commissioners can get, it's going to help them make these decisions as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Any questions for Tom on what he gave a brief report on this morning? Hearing none? Good. You're not on the hot seat then for right now, but I'm sure coming down the road you will be. Thank you again.
Sir.
Moving forward, Mr. Roach, is there any unscheduled business?
No, Chairman, I have none.
Okay, Mr. Stewart, Operations Report.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have in your packet a summary of our service performance, information on our workforce update, as well as information on our November service change. I would like to kind of fit all of those things together for you. Starting with the ser- performance summary, service performance summary for the first quarter of fiscal year '23. Our ridership continues to improve. For example, a 6.7% increase in bus ridership, 7.2% increase in MetroLink. But putting this in context, this is an improvement over last year versus going back, let's say, to fiscal year 2019. So we are still significantly, our ridership is still significantly below pre-COVID-19 levels, but it continues to improve. I'd like to move to the workforce update. We have, we continue to lose the battle, you know, in terms of being able to hire versus losing operators and mechanics and the like. As a result of that, we are proposing a service change for November 28th. Comparison is that, for example, we are down 191 operators at this time. When I reported to you about September, we were down 170. So things are, are changing, but I think there's some light at the end of the tunnel. We actually have operators that have left the company, are contacting us and trying to figure out how they can come back. Now, that's only two or three at this point, but hopefully that positive trend will continue. This kind of leads me into the service change. On November 28th, we did a service change in March of this year, where we had about a 5% reduction in service, basically at that point to try to match up our operator, operator, our service ability with our operators that we had working. But as, as I've alluded to, things have continued to deteriorate. In October, for example, we had 4,000, over 4,000 missed runs. And missed runs means that people are waiting for a bus that does not come. So we feel that we need to make another significant service change, a 7%, additional 7% reduction in order to alleviate that situation. When we did our 5% reduction in March, our system called for having 636 operators. This current service reduction that is taking place on November 28th calls for 584. We are currently at 598. So we should be able to put the service on the street, a reliable service on the street to match our, our ability to do that in, in terms of resources. So I want to give you a little few highlights about the service change. It is going to impact 42 bus routes. As Mr. Roach alluded to, it will allow us to put the MetroLink service, the Blue Line service, back in operation, all the way from Shrewsbury to Fairview Heights. That is a wonderful thing. Most of the bus routes will be impacted, 42, 18 of the 42 bus routes impacted will be, it'll be a change in frequency. So rather than having 30-minute service, it may become 45-minute service, that kind of situation. So that's mainly the things that'll happen. We'll have two routes that will end at 8:00 p.m. rather than continuing into the evening. We'll supplement these situations with Lyft and with Via. This has been a very, very difficult process. I've been with my planning people and my operations people and, and getting input from frontline people. You know, the, the consideration is that we want to provide the best service possible to our customers, and customer considerations were certainly taken into account in every situation. So it's not something that we, it's like, well, it's something we have to do. We have to be able to provide reliable service. So also in this process, we're moving 12 routes that were coming out of Brentwood, and we're moving them over to Devolver. We learned during the flood that we can achieve efficiencies, moving routes to come out of Devolver, so we're also implementing some of that. So that is a overview of where we are now, what our service change is. You have additional information in your packets, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I've got a few if no one else does.
Okay.
Chuck, thank you for your report and for your work on this, and your team's work on this difficult issue. I just wanted to know, I think we've talked a little bit about this, but to the degree that we can provide the public any certainty or anybody that might be watching on, I know we've had a couple, a series of rounds of successive service cuts here lately. To what extent do you think that, that this latest round of cuts actually gets us to a level that is sustainable for the foreseeable future, so that we're not predicting another need to make more service cuts two or three months from now? I've got a follow-up after that, too.
Yeah, excellent question, Commissioner. And I think we're, I think we're at, I really do. I think we are, things should start to turn around as we move into next year. We're seeing some changes taking place in the job. We're seeing some changes uh, taking place in the job markets, uh, I mean, in tech industry. So those things will probably start uh, shifting down. We're seeing that our uh, our team members that are leaving. They're finding that the grass is not really that much greener on the other side. Uh, we're implementing our traction and retention programs. Uh, that the board approved uh, a few months ago. Um, we're changing our, our change, we're changing our training plans. So a lot of what we were losing in employees was happening during training. So we're, we're changing our emphasis on, on attract and retain, retain from the first minute. So I think we have a lot of um, things in place that as, as we go forward. And if the, as the market turns around, then we will be able to at least sustain where we are now. Now, what we might do in March is do a little tweaking. What we need to tweak right now is. The impacted uh, riders. Uh, we will work as we move forward to make sure that if we. Took a route away or moved a route around the corner. And we get people that contact us and say, well, hey. You know, what are you going to do for me? Then we will start um, adjusting our, our uh, Lyft service. Uh, and our Via service and our Colorado ride service in order to accommodate those passengers.
And then, thank you for that answer. Um, and 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 one more just question on the, on the pipeline. I know, I think a couple of meetings ago, you briefed that one of the issues, especially for. Um, the operators was that getting operators in the pipeline is that some folks were. Sort of leaving once they get, got their CDL. Um, or at a certain level of the training, have there, have there been any steps? I mean, I know that's a difficult problem to address, but have there been any steps to, to sort of alleviate that? Have we seen any change in, in people leaving at that point in the training process?
A, a CDL is gold. Everybody, everybody wants people with CDLs at this point. What we've actually started doing is trying to hire people that already have CDLs. So that, so that they know, you know, we, we know uh, that they have it, they know what they're getting into when they come here. So um, and that is helping us.
Okay, again, and thank you and your team for this. I know you guys are on top of it, and this is just, it's a difficult time across the labor market, I think, and then we're doing everything we can, um, but it's gonna. You know, make sure we're staying on it, which we obviously are. So, so thank you and your team.
Well, I certainly appreciate the support that we've gotten from the board. Uh, in your efforts to give us the resources we need in order to do this.
Thanks.
Any other questions for uh, Chuck on his report?
I have a couple. Thanks so much, um, Commissioner, uh, Chair for, for allowing me to ask these. First of all, Chuck, I just want to echo, um. What Sam said. You know, y- y- you and your team are doing a really phenomenal job during incredibly challenging time. But I, I think it's important that um, we make sure. That our communications with our current writers are really strong. And so I have no idea whether or not this is um. A good or a bad suggestion, but if there's any way that we can somehow. Uh, marry the new. Fair system with contacts with existing, with, with people that buy those tickets through our, our electronic. Fair service. Um, I think that would be helpful because those are the folks that we really want to make sure. Um, have the information on timely basis. That I don't know whether or not that's, that's either doable or, or even a, a good suggestion, but. You, you know, sometimes. Some of the biggest issues that we have are that we just have not um, anticipated how people, our customers get their information. And there's, there's waiting for a bus and it doesn't show up, and so we really need to figure out how we communicate. In advance and effectively with people who are waiting for transit. And get stuck at the bus stop. I mean, the train is eventually going to come, but the, the bus stops are really my concern, so. Anything we can do?
Well, we've got Tom on here with us, uh, I'm sure we can, can incorporate that going forward. Uh, right now, we are doing uh, our normal dissemination of information. Uh, social media, uh, posters, we're having ambassadors at, at bus stops. All of those things trying to make sure that we get the word out as efficiently and as effectively as we can at this point. You know, when we do these service changes, we don't always have the. The time uh, between getting all the planning and implementation done. Uh, making the final decisions and getting the word out. So there is an ex- extensive. Uh, process going on right now, uh, to make sure that our, our passengers know about the changes. And we will continue to do that as we push toward it and uh, work our way through it. But I um, I think that's a fantastic uh, idea, and we will certainly uh, incorporate that as we move forward.
Thank you, and, and I, I'm not an operations person, so you do with that suggestion what is best, um, and I don't even know if it's. Feasible. The other thing I wanted to say is, um. I, I want to make sure that, that our customers understand that this is not. Um, arbitrary or capricious that, or we're trying to save money. This is because we just don't have. Um, the labor force to meet the demands, so. And that we're sensitive to the fact that when we don't have a labor force, oftentimes the people are trying to get to work themselves, and so in effect, it impacts their ability to actually. You know, get to their, their job or their educational institution or whatever. I just, I'm so sorry about this, and I really hope it turns around soon.
You know, that's um. It has been interesting, well, it's been. Um, working with my team, my, my planning team and my operations team. Uh, all the meetings boiled down, you know, you can reroute, you can do this and do that. But all, all the um. Decisions boil down to, how can we do this without impacting, you know? Impacting as few people as possible, and uh, there was quite a bit of back and forth between those teams. Um, but their, their commitment is to the customer. To providing good service to the customer, and we got down to, you know, is it. What, how do we impact these three people on this route versus these fifty over here? So those kind of decisions were looked at, they were made, and we still have those three people in mind. As to how we're going to move forward with continuing to provide them with public transit.
Any other questions for Chuck on his report? Chuck, I have one, uh, I know you've had some uh, discussions with uh, Saint Clark County. Is this going to impact uh, anything uh, that uh, that they have going on?
This does not impact any existing routes in Illinois. We are working about some other route changes over there, but this particular service change does not impact Illinois.
Very good, thank you.
Other than, other than that metro train, the blue train going to Fairview Heights, so that's a great.
Yeah, okay, very good. All right, if there's no other questions for Chuck, again, uh, just echoing what you've heard this morning already, thank you and your team, and. I know you, the conversation that you and I had, I know you're burning the candle at both ends, and uh. Uh, we appreciate that, and I always tell Talby to get his foot up off you a little bit, so. But uh, appreciate the job you're doing. Um, Meyer, we need to hear about some upcoming dates. Do you have them?
Yes, the next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, January twelfth at eight thirty AM. The next Operations Committee meeting will be held on Friday, January twenty seventh at eight thirty AM. Followed by the Audit Finance and Administration Committee meeting. We will also have a Board of Commissioners meeting on Friday, February seventeenth at eight thirty.
Very good, thank you. At this time, I need a motion, uh, that the board go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential or privileged matters as permitted. Under by state development board policy, chapter ten, section ten point zero eight zero. D one legal, D three personal, and D, uh, and D ten auditors. I need a motion.
Golladay, so moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
And then a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Golladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Beach.
Aye.
Commissioner Gladney.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello.